Right, moving on then to matter 27. Before we go there, I had to contemplate it at, in mulling over the issues that were discussed in terms of Power Court, whether I had a supplementary question to ask, but I was only going to ask that if Capital Regional were here, so they're not here, so I can't really, in fairness, expect any discussion, but I can perhaps just signal it. In the, obviously, quite a few scenarios were put to me about possible ways forward from leaving the plan alone to various combinations of modifications. One of those options was to, and I think, in effect, this was a proposition by the Football Club as one alternative, was to leave the allocation, the range of users at Power Court, in effect, unaltered, but to add the relocation of the Football Club to an early review. I'm not saying that was necessarily your preferred option, but it was an option. I suppose in that circumstance, I'm not sure if we covered the issue of what would then follow in terms of the reference to provision for sport in the policy. Does that make sense as a question? First question is, in that, following that scenario through, what would logically happen to that? Now, I'm sure people would have different views on that, but I'm not sure that was quite explicitly discussed, was it? Does that make sense to you?
Not, not immediately.
No. What I might do is go away and, what I might possibly do is phrase that as a question for the three parties.
I suspect that's the safest way to do it.
Yeah, I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to.
At the events earlier in the week.
Yes, I wasn't going to discuss that. I wasn't going to ask you to answer the question. So I might well go away and do that, if I, if I reflect on it and think it's necessary.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I wouldn't have a discussion on that without parties being there. Okay, let's move on then to matter 27. My first question was how the hierarchy in LP 21 was arrived at, and I haven't really got any questions, I've seen the answers derived from the retail study. I think you're suggesting for completeness that Napier Park should be added to the list of neighbourhood centres, is that?
That's correct, sir, yeah.
Does that still apply? Nothing changed through the current permission?
Yes, so the, respective of the scale of the retail, the intentions are, in terms of the use of the residential community and the other places there, we would still see that pretty much as constituting, in effect, a new neighbourhood centre.
Yeah, okay. I suppose really because that's changed to a policy and it then brings that site into its part of LP 21, that probably ought to be a modification, I think.
Yep.
Again with the Football Club, I'll perhaps leave you to signal where you want to be involved. Then in question two, asked whether the sequential and impact assessment requirements set out in LP 21 were consistent with policy. Is there any reason for me to think they might not be? And then can you tell me how?
Sorry, just coming in.
Yeah, sorry.
I, I think that's, that's where, that was in our hearing statement, that's where we raised the point about the need.
Yes.
I do, I'm going to come on to that later.
That's all right, I'll come on to that in a moment, yeah. How was the threshold of 1,000 square metres for the impact assessment arrived at?
That, that is addressed directly in the retail study, sir, and it, it's cognisant of the, the scale of retail need identified and the size of the district of neighbourhood centres, and there's a reference to the average size of district centres being some 8,000 square metres and 14, just rounding, 14,000 square metres for neighbourhood centres, and so the retail study suggests a 1,000 square metre threshold should be applied, so.
And that's a matter of judgment, presumably based on the fact that 2,500, the default framework?
Yes.
Would be too high in the sense that it might have an adverse?
That's correct.
Okay, let's turn on to the restriction in LP 1C. So that, C1, isn't it? I'll tell you what, I'll summarise what I think your point is, and you tell me if I've summarised it correctly, then I'll. So C1 says that individually or cumulatively, net additional convenience and comparison floor space would not significantly exceed the identified quantitative need over the planned period, so that's presumably the 9,000 and 53,000 figures, isn't it? Now, what the Football Club are arguing is that all the framework requires is that proposals satisfy the sequential and impact tests, and if they do, they should be allowed, because I think your argument is, in that sense, they can't be compromising a town centre first approach or the vitality or viability of any centres. So then I think the argument is that, in effect, what this is doing is requiring just a needs test, that by default, if you're going to go above those identified levels of need, you, you're essentially applying something that doesn't really required by national policy anymore. Is that, is that the nub of your argument?
Absolutely, yes, and I think just looking at that a little bit further, is if you look at it in a development management sense, if you did have some proposal that was exceeding the need that's identified, would you refuse that application on the grounds of there's no retail need?
I do wonder if, for some extent, this is maybe a little bit academic, given, given there's an early review coming, in the sense that is, is the council likely to get up to 50,000 square metres of floor space, but in the next five years? Is it councils?
Yes, thank you, sir. I think I alluded to this a bit earlier on, that it isn't the intent to introduce a new needs test, MPPF is quite clear that that is no longer there, in fact, it's, you know, the emphasis is on the, the authority to actually identify and quantify what the objective need is, which we have done, and, you know, with all the caveats about the, you know, the longer time horizon, how reliable the figures get. So in terms of this policy, it does refer to the centre hierarchy, and it's in that context that we refer to the need that's identified, been identified, in order to make sure that this is really about the scale and the role and function of the centres is, is not compromised by out-of-scale proposals, so.
It doesn't say that though, does it? I suppose the question is if, if it's about not compromising the scale or function of any centres, then should the policy not just say that?
We, yeah, we can.
Yeah.
The clarity of that, so.
So how, so what would, let's just look at, so the wording would be potentially to delete criteria one and say something instead that proposal shouldn't compromise the vitality and viability of any sen, existing centres? Is that, is that what you were saying, in effect?
By reason of scale and function.
Yeah.
Well, scale also isn't necessarily a test of the MPPF either, and, and that point about the viability would be covered in C3 then, wouldn't it?
Well, I suppose that's the point in a way, isn't it? Is that if you pass the, is not the aim of the sequential and impact tests to determine whether you're going to cause a problem to the vitality and viability of any centre? So is the policy, in effect, already achieving that? So what, in effect, in addition, is C1 trying to achieve, apart from, on the face of it, putting an absolute cap on retail provision?
I suppose the only supplementary I would add to that, I mean, I, I do understand that, that, you know, we could, we could perhaps dispense with that, but there is an issue about, you know, the finite land supply in the borough, in terms of competing uses, so I think in this instance, in Luton's case, having some guidance about, you know, we don't expect proposals to significantly go beyond what we've, you know, identified through the objective evidence base is a valid point in order to try and.
So you're saying it is a cap, really?
Well, subject to review.
I mean, given it's going into review anyway, is the question somewhat hypothetical? Because are you really likely to get cumulatively in the next five years permissions for 57,000 square metres of comparison floor space coming forward?
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
I, I suggest just take out criteria one, because I think, in effect, on the face of it, it's just, even, even taking into account what the intent is, it's just duplicating the sequential and impact test, I think, but clouding the issue. I'm not quite sure there's enough of a justification on land use balance to, to do that. You might then need to go back and look at the Northern Gateway text at 12. Okay. Question three, I asked how the town centre boundary had been defined, and I can't stand your explanation really, it largely follows the Ring Road, the railway line, doesn't it?
Correct.
And the concentration of various town centre users. Have any concerns been raised about it?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Right, and then, I think we touched on this before, question four is about premier, primary and secondary shopping frontages, and I think, just to be clear, that secondary frontages are in, in effect, the same as the definition in the framework, as are the primary frontages, and the premier frontage is in, is in framework terms, a primary frontage, isn't it?
Correct, for the impact.
It's like, it's like a primary plus designation or?
Yep.
Okay. I suppose what, what led you to draw a distinction between primary and premier? And premier is the MAL, isn't it, really?
That's it, sir.
Just within the MAL.
And there is, there is history to that in terms of the Exstand Local Plan, so it is already in policy, and the retail study provides explanation about the, the particular importance attributed to the, to the MAL and the fact that there is a, it has the highest kind of footfall and concentration of the main retail uses, so.
Are you able to point me to a reference in the?
I'll just try and see, but I think we have put those in the matter statement, I'll just try and see if I can pick them out. I think it's paragraphs 2.4, 2.5, and there's a number, I mean, 3.3, 3.3, there's several in there, so in CEN 005. It's on page five of our matter statement, under question four, and it's the second paragraph.
That's fine, and we'll come on to it in a moment, but is the, is the main policy distinction the restriction on non-A1 users?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, we'll come on to that in a, in a moment. I then asked whether, in question five, whether the Luton Town Centre shopping area was the same as the primary shopping area in the framework. I think that's the case, isn't it?
That is the case, sir.
And then in question six, I noted that the inset map has primary block frontages shown to the primary shopping frontage, but they're not referred to at all in the policy. I suppose in a way you could argue that's not, therefore nothing to do with me, if you're seeing it's, I'm assessing the soundness of the plan and the map shows the geographic illustration of policies in the plan, so if you show something on the plan that's not in a policy, then I suppose that's your lookout, not mine, but.
It's purely a mechanism to help us calculate the percentages, so.
Yeah, I'd, but even then I don't quite understand it, I suppose, because all it does is kind of shade in the space between the primary frontages, doesn't it?
It does, but it's, it's kind of recognising that the, you know, the frontages are overlooking, you know, are opposite one another, whereas most of the other, or, you know, the characterisation of the secondary shopping frontages tend to, you know, may not be so uniform consistent on both sides of the street, so.
I suppose I'm not entirely convinced it's something that's necessary for soundness, so whether you wish to advance its main modi, a minor modification, you'd have to consider whether it went beyond that or not, but I don't, I don't think I need to refer to it for soundness. I suppose I would just say though that, you'd have to think, in that context, whether it should be shown on the policies map if it's not referred to in the plan. Okay, and then my question seven is about policy LP 22. And that's the policy that sets the limit on the amount of non-A1 user, so it's basically, it's 10% non-A1 in premier, 25% in primary and 50% in secondary, and I think it was at least one representation that said that's too, those percentages are too low in effect. And I suppose I noted in my question that the, the framework does talk about primary and secondary frontages, those which include a high proportion of retail users, which may include food, drinks, clothing and household goods, so things that are not strictly A1, I suppose. So what's the justification? That's quite high level, isn't it, of protection in the premier, in the MAL, for instance?
It is, sir, and that reflects the, you know, the kind of, the evidence from the retail strategy about having particularly care about the importance of the MAL and restricting non-A1 users in.
Did the study make any recommendations on percentages?
I don't think it does, sir, because it's, it's already, because it's an existing part of policy within the Exstand Local Plan, so it's already being applied to, without any, any issues of, you know, or challenge, so it's, it's seen, I mean, the, there is some history to it in terms of how those figures were derived, but we suggest, sir, that they are pretty much based on what your typical representation would be, in terms of trying to get to a figure, but that, you know, obviously there'll be a spectrum of.
And have you any idea what the figures are at the moment in the premier and primary areas? Are they still policy compliant, if you like?
They should generally be policy compliant because we've applied these percentages.
You've applied the policy, so it should be.
We've been doing it for, for many years, so the frontages should be compliant with our overall approach at the moment.
And do you find that's a particular issue when you're applying it? In other words, are there users that keep coming forward that are refused?
We, we have had issues with high percentages of betting shops and hot food takeaways, for example, which are of been of specific concern, have a, as we've indicated, those policies have been applied without any successful challenge.
Okay. And then the MAL raised a specific issue. And I noted in my question that your response to the representations, in this context, said additional flexibility may arise in the application of the policy to the MAL, and Capital Regional, I think, clarified that what they were seeking was the potential to have a, a food court within the MAL, without, with that being, if you like, set aside from the 10% requirement. And now, if they'd have been here, I was going to say, they'd, they'd said they welcome the proposed modifications that seek to address this, but I wasn't sure you'd actually advanced one such, or had I missed that somewhere?
No, I, I was confused about that as well, I would have liked to have had clarity from Capital Regional on that matter as well.
Okay.
It may be a reference to their earlier representations on the, the draft Reg 18 plan, and that may be all they're referring to, is that we, we addressed some representations of that.
Yeah. So really what they're seeking is potential to create a food court, isn't it, within the MAL, but set aside from the 10%, so how would you respond to that, given that you've indicated a degree of flexibility may arise?
Yes, the, I mean, there are food courts already in the MAL, with clusters. Um, yes, uh, the, I mean, there are food courts already in the MAL, um, with clusters, uh, and the, the caution, the only caution we have is in terms of what the, the retail, uh, study says, in terms of being very careful about non A one uses in the premier, um, shopping frontage. Um, so we've suggested that with the, you know, potential extension of the MAL, that the, there is still going to be further flexibility, you know, with increased, uh, floor space capacity for you to, um, consider further food court provision.
So where would the extension to the MAL be then? What's, is that something that's got planning permission?
That, um, that would be in, in terms of, uh, any extension northwards into the Northern Gateway, sir.
Ah, right. So one of the possibilities is that the MAL for that site is the MAL extends into that?
Sir, just for your benefit, hopefully, um, two points that might be existent. The first is probably that there is some precedent for the extension concept, because we already have the MAL extension into St George's Square. That has a number of, um, A three and A four uses sort of externally facing the square. So obviously it depends on the precise nature of proposals, um, but there is clearly the potential for.
Is that allowed then as an exception to the policy?
It, it, it was clearly allowed and it was an exception to the policy.
It, sorry, it wa.
It was an exception to the policy and it was permitted.
I, I suppose the question is then whether, um, that should be done, whether the policy should recognize that or not?
Well, just the second point I was going to make, sir, and you may well be correct, but the, we have got a mod zero sixty-five, or mod, yeah, zero six five, um, which is simply that there was previously food allocations shown on the town centre inset map, which obviously weren't referred to in the policy text, and we, the council has now decided to remove. So I suppose in some ways that does increase the flexibility, but as you say, the question then is should the policy actually refer to the flexibility?
That's the question I'm asking, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I, this, we just think this may be what Capital and Regional have picked up on in terms of saying, well, they welcome a modification, but it's the only one that we can really see that.
Sorry, but one can take different views about this, but, but it may be that the presence of an exception just indicates that the policy as drafted is working properly. And as and when someone makes out the case that there needs to be an exception and the local authority continuing to approach that properly and, and consider whether or not there are circumstances justifying an exception. But the fact there's one exception by itself doesn't necessarily logically tell you anything about the efficacy of the policy.
So I think it's also worth adding there that that, that edge of the, the MAL is allocated in this proposals map as a secondary frontage, which would allow a far greater range of non A one users if the MAL would, uh, decide to reconfigure their, their retailers.
Okay, yeah, that's the frontage to the square, isn't it?
Indeed, yes. And there, there's also, as, as, uh, Mr Owen mentioned before, we're expecting them to be involved in the extension uh, of the MAL, um, uh, north. And policy LP eleven B one expects the market to be relocated in that extension. And if that was the case, then that would release the market area at the eastern side of the MAL to come forward as a fo, a food zone, and that would be policy compliant. Uh, because there are no restrictions on the existing market area. And there are also similar ex, uh, expectations for the MAL to be involved in the development of, uh, the site north of St George's Square and the gap site. Uh, and policy LP eleven D one expects, uh, or would support a food zone in that area as well, overlooking the square. So there are flexibilities in the plan if the MAL would care to, to get on board to help deliver those policy objectives.
Uh, sir, sorry, if I could just.
Well, I too, well, just let me clarify, because there was a lot there. Um, just want to make sure I've got it all. Um, so the first point is that there is secondary frontage to the square, which has got the fifty percent flexibility, um, anyway. And the third point is that if the MAL extends into the Northern Gateway, it will be covered by the policy, um, in the plan, which is more flexible.
That's correct. And the, the other point there is that the, the policy expects the market to be relocated there, which will allow the existing market site in the eastern edge of the MAL to potentially come forward as a food zone.
And is that, sorry, is that in the Northern Gateway policy?
Uh, no, when I talk about the eastern edge, it is, it's literally the, the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I know where the, yeah, the markets, it's, yeah, it's just over there, isn't it, really, as you go into the MAL?
That, that, that isn't covered by any frontages within the policy, so you're more open to.
No, but you said the policy expects it to be relocated. Were you referring to something specific then?
Uh, that was policy. Policy LP eleven B one talks about the relocation of the market.
Okay, and the, yeah, so, so the existing market isn't covered by any frontage, is it?
That's correct, so you could have a, a wide range of users there.
So really you're saying there's enough flexibility there and, um, exceptions could be considered as a material consideration in effect, but you don't see that as being a change.
Uh, thank you. Uh, no, sir, I just wanted to point out, um, other than this slight irony that Capital and Regional, Capital and Regional are not here to, to discuss these town centre ideas. Um, but it would be perhaps useful to clarify that there are no active planning application discussions in relation to those sites with Capital and Regional, um, to the best of my knowledge. Um, and I think where twenty twenty, um, developments and it might be useful at some point to clarify the, the relationship and distinction between Luton Town Football Club and Twenty Twenty Developments, but um, I think in relation to the creative quarter and these sites, the, um, the recent, uh, purchase, as you've heard of Power Court, um, the, clearly the, the intention there is to integrate with the town centre and the character and, um, unique vitality of the creative quarter is one of the very best things about Luton. So we, um, didn't have any material things to say, uh, on the earlier session in relation to the creative quarter, because we felt that, um, yourself and Historic England adequately covered the, the important characteristics of it. But I just really wanted to clarify whether there are any active discussions in, in a planning application context.
Well, I think that'll be up to the council to decide whether they want to ask, answer that question, um, because I suppose it's.
So I'm not aware of any, any pre-op discussions. Um, I am aware that the council has been in dialogue with, um, Capital and Regional about their investment strategy, plans for the future.
Okay, and in terms of, you mentioned the relationship between the football club and Twenty Twenty Developments, I, I, uh, I think I made the assumption, maybe a wrong one, that the, that in effect for the purpose of this examination and the issues before me, they were synonymous really, in a sense.
No, a, 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 absolutely, but I think, you know, there is a slight sort of unusual nature to, um, sitting here as, as, as the football club, but the, the background to the football club is, as I think my colleague Gary Sweet explained to you on, uh, on Tuesday. Luton Town Football Club was on the verge of extinction in two thousand and eight. A, um, a fan-led consortium came together to, to put it back on a footing. I mean, it's, it's important and relevant to say that the, um, the, um, the plan to save the club was very much on a long-term basis, hence the name Twenty Twenty. So it, it effectively, it's Twenty Ten, Twenty Twenty Holdings is the group that owns the football club. And that was very purposely done on the basis that the football club in two thousand and eight was in such a state that it would need twelve years to correct matters on and off the pitch. As well as fans, the, um, there are, let's say, less than ten principal private individuals who, who are all Lutonians and, or Bedfordians, as it were. And correcting matters on the football, on the football pitch was part of it. As the football, football side of things, um, settled and hopefully is now picking up back to where the club aspires to be, because again, there was mention on Tuesday of, of average attendances and things, but it's, it's easy to forget that Luton Town Football Club was actually one of the founder members of the Premier League, so it's quite history. But the relevance here is that Power Court has been acquired by Twenty Twenty Developments Luton Limited, which is wholly owned, um, by the same investors as part of Luton Football Club. And has, uh, shareholders' trusts, sorry, supporters' trust are a key part of the, the, the board. And I think that, um, that purchase, outright purchase now gives that long-term intention to, um, locate the football club to Power Court.
Okay, I think, I mean, I think that's fine. I understand the relationship. I don't want to drift into discussion that we had yesterday fundamentally than the day before, so let's, let's leave it there. Um. I think that takes me through the issue I want to discuss, um, in terms of the MAL and, um, flexibility. Um, yes, I mean, just to, just to sweep up those two changes to the policies map to delete from them the food court, I think, um, again, I think that's entirely a matter for you really, because they're not a reflection of a policy in the the plan, so it's not something I can recommend on as such. Um, but yeah, I would, I would agree, you need to take them out because they don't reflect a plan. Okay, um. Question eight, I asked about how the different town centre policy areas were defined. I think I explained that. Uh, I think I understand that. Um, can you tell me anything about the Castle Quarter? Because in, perhaps in a way, that's the one that's got the least attached to it in terms of specific proposals, isn't it? What was it led you to, um, define it? LP three does refer to it.
Yes, sir, um, the, I think we've said in our matter statement that the, certainly the name Castle Quarter reflects a potential historic link with, uh, the possibility of a castle having been there previously. But in terms of the rest of the matter statement, we, we explained how, uh, there's a link between the, um, town centre framework plan, which I know we've said is long in the tooth. A lot of the sort of investment strategy and the objectives of the town centre are long-term in terms of delivery, so they are still relevant. And materially are also enshrined to a certain extent, perhaps to a, a less degree of resolution in, in the excellent local plan. And what this plan is trying to do is give that a higher level of resolution uh, in terms of the, the sites and the mosaic in the different areas, but it's broadly reflective of the, the, you know, stemming from the framework, town centre framework. And in this area particularly, um, which is opposite the, you know, the student university campus, um, we see as an opportunity area in terms of more, more, you know, relating to some of the sites there for residential, uh, development, but also the retail frontage also applying there, um, for some mixed use proposals to come forward. So it's really trying to encourage into something like that.
And talks about a comprehensive scheme, doesn't it? So you, you, you're envisaging something there that's because it's, seems to be more or less occupied by buildings, doesn't it, at the moment?
It is mo, mostly occupied by existing buildings and that locations, so there are one or two sites where there is a degree of vacancy. Um, and there's been some of those, I mean, the recent retail, there's only a mo, modest, small amount of two units on, uh, Park Street with, with residential above gives the example of the type of scheme.
Okay. Um, question nine, I asked about the River Lee. I haven't got anything I want to follow up there. Question ten was about policy LP twenty-three. So there, the, the intention is to retain seventy-five percent of, um, shopping frontages, this is in district and neighbor, neighborhood areas and shopping parades, isn't it? So again, I suppose the question is, how was the seventy-five percent figure arrived at? Is that gained from the, um, current plan?
It is, sir, and it's, 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 it's the same, uh, philosophy and the same arguments behind managing, um, the degree of flexibility, um, which has been successful already in the current level.
And is in effect, coming up with a figure in some degree a matter of planning judgment, really?
It is, sir, and it, and it relates to, um, the, the update of the retail, um, study and evidence base, which includes going around and surveying each, um, local, uh, shopping area, you know, whether it's a neighborhood district centre or just a, um, a local centre and, um, looking at the health and vibe, um, health check and vitality and vitality viability of those areas and including the, you know, whether there's changes to the extent of those areas. So there is an evidence base there.
Okay, and then the final question, um, was about Bird's Foot Lane Food Store, which is referred to as food store allocation. Um, but you've clarified it's listed in effect in LP twenty-one A, where it finds expression now it's a neighbourhood centre. Has that food store been built or is it, or is it just a question of encompassing that?
Yeah, it hasn't been built yet, sir.
Okay. Has anyone got any more they want to say on this matter? I'm happy you've covered what you wanted. Yeah, okay. Right, well, that's, that's it then, to a degree. Um, we've reached the, um, end of the scheduled hearing sessions, um, so the next stage really is main modifications. Um, you'll be expecting from me something on Power Court and Stockwood, uh, Park. Um, other than that, um, as we know, you've got a long list of main modifications. Um, if there's anything in those that I think I need to write to you about, I'll do it at the same time. Um, so then your job really is to work them up, um, subject them to sustainability appraisal and go away and consult upon them. Um, then it'll be for me to consider any representations. I think it's fair to say the expectation in the, um, the goldbook procedural guide is that would be a written representations procedure. But that depends on the circumstances. Um, so are you clear in effect on what you need to be doing there?
I think we are, sir, and, uh, I mean, it's, it'll be useful, and I think you might be aware already, because we're recording the sessions that we will have, you know, we'll be able to check in detail what, what we've agreed.
Okay. Again, consultation, replicating the Regulation nineteen stage, but there's guidance in the, in the goldbook. Um, I think as I've said, I, I need to see a draft of your main modifications, um, through the program officer and then the final version. And the same applies to sustainability appraisal. Um, so I think carefully about which of those might need sustainability appraisal. Um, I think various times you've, there's been discussion about whether you might liaise informally with other parties.
Yes.
I think that's processed entirely for you, really. Um, I wouldn't let it, um, delay things. Um, I suppose my overall advice would be now to move forward with that as quickly as possible. Um, you mentioned yesterday a timetable. Um, do you want to run through that?
Yes, sir, I can do that. Um, it's a sort of an indicative one, so sort of starting next week, as it were. I would hope that we would be in a position to prepare the modifications as we've discussed in the examination, say, within two weeks. We would then need to send them to yourself, which will take, I don't know, however long, however long it takes. I suppose the question is it could, there might need to be some to and froing and.
The, there might be. I mean, in terms of what you've started, I think it's fair to say you've had a response back from me quite promptly, but it just depends where else I get sent and what else I have to do. So again, um, but I will deal with it obviously as quickly as I can.
So that, that sort of takes as long as it takes in a sense. We've then. We've then sort of earmarked three weeks for SA, and we've sort of told our consultants to anticipate that in February. Once we get that back, we're going to have to share that with you, and again, there may be to-ing and fro-ing with the consultants on that, I guess, potentially. And then, once we've got that, I've suggested two weeks to prepare the consultation and the online stuff and so on and so forth, before we actually consult. For six weeks, I've then said that depending on the response, it may take a couple of weeks to turn that round, and then it's over to yourself, I think, isn't it? So adding all those up, I think the fastest that would be likely to happen would be around about a 16-week sort of timescale.
Yes, talking about a four-month process, aren't we, really?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the important thing is to keep, keep pushing at each stage. My experience is councils tend to breathe a sigh of relief having got to the last day of the hearings, and then sometimes inspectors can struggle to get drafts out of them, but I would really keep up the, the pressure on the process, and I will do my best to respond quickly to things. I think I've said, haven't I, I tend to find it useful at that stage if the council does also do a brief summary of the main points that have arisen in representations and their response to them. And I think I've mentioned that already, haven't I?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Site visits. I've already visited what I think I need to, and did it all unaccompanied. If I think I need to look at anything again, again, I'll do it unaccompanied unless there was any particular reason not to. I can't really tell you the timescale that you might get my report for a fact check, because it's entirely dependent on the main modifications process, really. But obviously, I'd aim to have it with you as soon as possible. And to stress, really, that the fact check is just that, and you get the report, so you can check that it's factually correct, it's not an opportunity, and that's before it goes public, but it's not an opportunity to have a second go over merits arguments. So is there anything else procedural?
Just a quick one, just to clarify, are you treating Power Court and Stockwood Park separately to that timetable?
In the sense of that I'm going to, that I will be writing about it.
Yeah.
It, it might affect that timetable, because, yes, I suppose what I can say, I would probably be aiming to get a letter to you in the next two to three, well, as soon as possible, but I would, I would envisage it, you know, it's something I would want to deal with straight away, but it might be the next two or three weeks, given other things I'll be expected to do. But yes, then, of course, it might affect the council's timetable in terms of what it does. So I, you know, I think, I think the council said there that was the timetable based on what had been discussed and...
Yeah. Just one question on that, if I may, sir, that, so if we have the main modifications excluding anything affecting Power Court and Stockwood Park ready, would, would you prefer us to hold back until you had issued your letter, we'd consider that, or send them to you as soon as possible?
I think in a way, because, well, perhaps some of the changes, some of the changes at Power Court and Stockwood, I suppose there's a central issue, isn't there? And as I said, there are various scenarios that people suggested, and that would, that could quite significantly affect what you do. There may be other things, I think, that were discussed that, if you like, would be more standalone, potentially. So if you feel you can do any work on that, well, I think that's up to you, really. But then you'd have to anticipate what I might be saying to you.
And then just to clarify, is your letter going to be a recommendation on course of action to take in those two policy areas?
Yes, well, I suppose what it will be, will be my views on what ought to be consulted upon as potential main modifications, however that is caveated, yes. But I wouldn't treat it as an interim report or interim findings. Okay. Does that, does that tell everyone what they need to know?
So, so it does. Thank you very much. And on behalf of the team and the council, can I once more just extend our thanks to both you and the program officer, and for the positive and proactive way that the examination sessions have unfolded, with the many helpful suggestions you've made on the way. And we are grateful for that approach, and hopefully it will lead to some main modifications that can be taken forward from here.
Okay, thank you very much. I was going to say, also, it's like, not everyone's here, but I'd like to thank the council for all the work you've put in, and obviously participants, the football club, but also all those who've been here on the many other days. And I suppose what I'd say is, considering the nature of the issues that have been in play right from the first day, the duty to cooperate, through to the football club, and clearly I know what's at stake with those issues for various parties, you know, I would like to thank everyone for conducting the hearing sessions in good spirit, because that just helps have a proper discussion. So I say that not only to those here, but all those who are not here as well. And of course, I would like to thank Louise, as program officer, who's busily typing over there, so can't hear, but I think the role of the program officer is, she's heard, the role of the program officer is absolutely invaluable, and Louise has definitely made sure this is all run smoothly, so my full thanks and appreciation. So that marks the end of these examination hearing sessions. Thank you all very much. Have a safe journey home.